Good evening, good evening to our Morgan Park students and our parents. We are so excited to have you all here for our COVID-19 reopening school plans. I literally cannot believe that it has been longer than a year since we have been all together in one school building. We tell you all this all the time, but we mean it from the bottom of our hearts that we miss you tremendously. It would not be great if I were not here with my three, uh, my three partners, the most wonderful assistant principals in all the Chicago public schools. And it is Assistant Principal Week, so I have to give them a shout out for being so amazing. Um, we started our meetings bright and early, uh, this morning, so it has been a really long day for us. But they are still, uh, hanging there with me, but they're probably, um, in a group chat talking about me, but that's okay. So, um, I will go ahead and I will allow them to introduce themselves and then we will get started with our COVID, uh, COVID-19 reopening plan. So, um, let's start off with Assistant Principal Poston, who was over at the Academic Center, then AP Jones and then AP Vice.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're so excited to possibly be, welcome everyone back on, um, April 19th. So it's just a pleasure to be here. I miss everyone and I'm ecstatic about the opportunity to see you on April 19th. So welcome, 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 welcome.
Hello, everyone. I am Assistant Principal Jones. I am the Assistant Principal 5th and 10th grade. And if I get to see my baby's face on April 19th, I'm going to be the most excited principal in all of the land because I miss you all so very much.
Hi, everyone. Uh, AP Vice, Assistant Principal for 11th and 12th grade. Now, I, I gotta say real quick, I gotta talk to Dr. Schenks. I always gotta go last on the introductions and these other two APs steal my thunder. Uh, but I am super excited to see you all. Uh, we cannot have you back. It's been way too long. And so we're just really looking forward to it and, uh, yeah, it'll be here before we know it.
You know what? And Mr. Vice does have a point because he's over 11th and 12th grade. He always has to go last. And I feel your pain because my maiden name starts with W. So in the days of when we did things in alphabetical order, I was always last. And I love when the teachers would do reverse alphabetical order. So, Mr. Vice, I promise that the next introduction, we are doing revert, reverse order. We're starting with you, AP Poston, you're gonna be last, and then, uh, AP Jones, you just stay in the middle, just holding us all together. Um, and so with that being said, um, the assistant principals are going to monitor the chat. And so for all of our families that are joining, um, because this is going on YouTube, of course, you all cannot comment orally, but we do have the chat feature available, so we ask that you all put all of your questions, um, in the chat because our goal is really to make sure that we get all of our, all of your questions answered, um, tonight, okay? And so the, um, the target audience for this particular reopening plan is really for our students and our parents who are returning. Um, and I know, you know, we have plenty of staff members who are joining us too. And so some of, uh, those answers may look a little bit different, um, for our staff members, but we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, just for expectations for our students. And so, um, we just want to give a reminder that right now that there is still an ongoing agreement between Chicago Public Schools and the CTU. And so, um, April 19th is the, uh, is the first day of the fourth quarter. It's the target day for students, um, to return to the classroom. And so return to high school and classrooms, uh, we want to make sure that it's available to students with their assigned teachers. And so the models at different schools will really just, um, differ depending on how many students are returning to individual schools. And so the reopening models definitely won't look the same. You know, Julian's model won't look like Morgan Park's model or Bogans' model. It really is just very dependent on, um, the number of students that are coming back at each school. Um, and so, you know, just especially for our families who may have kids at multiple schools and you're wondering why things may look a little bit different because each school really needed to base their plans on how many students were returning to that particular school. Um, we are excited and we're hopeful that the CTU and CPS will, um, come to a finalized agreement really soon so that the April 19th will be a go date, but we promise that we will keep you all informed, um, if anything changes. So, um, really an understanding of the proposed framework, there are 1,074 students enrolled at Morgan Park, so that's our total enrollment. Of those 1,074, 325 students will be returning in person. And so that's about 30% of our, um, total student, uh, student body will be back, um, in person. And so the number of students returning, we have 19 7th graders returning. We have 28th graders returning. We have 95 9th graders returning, 72 10th graders, 63 11th graders, and 56 12th graders who will be returning. And so, um, the, the model, the hybrid model, and the reason it is still called a hybrid model is even though we have students who will return, be returning, um, in person, of those students who will be returning in person, they will not be in every single day. So two days will be in person and then three days will be remote, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So students will either be on what we call shift A. And so students who are on the shift A will attend school on Monday and Tuesday, and then they'll be remote on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then shift B students will attend on, um, Thursday and Friday, and they'll be remote on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Um, and, and for the most part, the shifts are grade level specific, but I'm hesitant to provide the specific grade levels for each of the shifts. And the reason being is because we really tried to work hard to accommodate families that have, um, students in multiple grade levels. So the shifts are not 100% necessarily perfect, the way that we have them laid out, because if a family has, let's say, a 9th grader and a 12th grader, we try to make sure that the 9th grader and the 12th grader had the same shift so that families could, um, work on their transportation and get students on the same day, if that makes sense. And so, um, I'll talk just a little bit more about how students will know if they're in shift A or shift B. And so, um, right now was as proposed, and this is, um, this is about 99% accurate, but it's looking like on Monday and Tuesdays, we'll have 159 students at school. And then on Thursday and Friday, we will have 166 students at school with no students, um, being in person on Wednesdays. And so Wednesday has been designated as a deep cleaning day. So no students, um, or right now, no students or, uh, staff are scheduled to be in the building, uh, with, with a few exceptions. But for the most part, the building will be virtually empty so that we can make sure that we have those, uh, have an opportunity for deep cleaning in all of the classrooms, the restrooms. Of course, the building will be getting, um, cleaned every day, but Wednesday is just a day of deep cleaning. And so for, um, the school schedule, so how families will know about their particular schedule is that students and parents will receive an email tomorrow, Thursday, April 8th, and this will have a specific schedule for their return. So it'll just say, you know, um, Bob Jones is scheduled to return and it's going to say the date and it'll say the shift. And it will also tell the student and the parent what day that they are scheduled, uh, what days of the week they're scheduled to be at school. And, um, so our very first week that, um, students return is a little bit of an awkward week. So I, um, just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So students who are on shift A, um, they will come to school on Monday and Tuesday. So that's Monday, April 19th and Tuesday, April 20th. Wednesday, no students at all. Again, um, Wednesday is the remote only day. On Thursday, April 22nd, that's when the shift B students would actually be starting because they don't start until their shift starts, which is on Thursday. However, that particular week, no students, um, well, or, or staff will be in the building because we will have our virtual parent teacher conferences. So for the very first week of school, students who are on shift B will actually not report to school until, um, until Friday, April 23rd. So as we're hearing on the news that school starts April 19th, it starts April 19th for our shift A students, and it actually starts April 23rd for our shift B students. But again, families will know exactly what day their, um, children are returning based on the personalized letter that will be coming via email tomorrow. And again, um, families, as you're on, if you have any questions, or even staff, if you have any questions, uh, please feel free to drop them in the chat. And so for our daily schedule, so the doors for students will open daily at 7:30. Um, so we're asking families, um, not to get students to school before 7:30 because that's what time supervision will actually start. Students can get a grab and go breakfast from the cafeteria at that time. Um, that's completely optional. Um, students have to be in class by 7:55 and instruction will begin promptly at 8 o'clock, the same way that it has been running in remote learning. A little bit different, um, so right now for our remote learning bell schedule, students have been dismissed at 2:30. But right now, uh, for during, um, this hybrid schedule, students will be in-person students. On their days that they return, they will be dismissed at 2:45. So what will happen between 2:30 and 2:45, um, students will have an opportunity to work on some of their executive functioning skills, so some of those organizational skills. Um, they'll have a chance to work on, uh, maybe completing some of the tasks they haven't completed during the day. Um, we'll use it as a study hall period, an opportunity to ask questions, but their eighth period teacher will have them in class until 2:45. So, um, let's talk about the health screener. So that is going to be one of the most, uh, really a key element of all of our students and staff members returning safely. So students will be required to complete a health screener every single morning. So let me say that again, um, every single morning. And we have found with athletics being back in session that what, one thing that holds up the line is when health screeners are not completed in advance. And so, um, before students are able to enter the black gates, whether they're on the east side of the school or the west side of the school, they will have to have their health screener complete even before they get to the school doors. We will be checking for health screeners at the gate. Um, health screeners can be conducted on their cell phones. And so we would actually suggest that families or students go ahead and do the health screeners before they get to school. That way it's already completed and it just makes the process a whole lot, um, more seamless. In the event, for whatever reason, if students don't have their cell phones, batteries died, all of that good stuff, um, we will have Chromebooks available to complete the health screener. But I do want to warn families in advance that using the Chromebooks to do the health screeners takes a little bit longer. And so it can just hold up the process. So that's what we're really encouraging all of our families to just go ahead and get the health screeners done, um, before they get to that black gate. Student shows their ID, gives their name, and then, um, our staff members at the gate will be able to check them in. Students who fail the health screener and/or the temperature check will need to be picked up. This is a non-negotiable. Once again, students who fail the health screener and/or the temperature check will need to be picked up. Um, and we, we're going to require that they get picked up immediately. Um, students who are displaying any COVID-19 symptoms will be required to be picked up immediately. Um, and then the school nurse will work with those families individually to let them know when they're able to return to school safely, okay? So we're not gonna say, you know, that they can come back tomorrow. That's literally, we're going to hand that to the school nurse and she will communicate with families about when they will be able to send their children back. So some other safety guidelines that will be in place. Students are going to be required to wear masks all of the time. We understand that this is not the most comfortable scenario, but what we do know is that this is the most safe scenario. Um, students will be allowed to remove masks to eat lunch and/or if they're eating their breakfast, but social distancing, um, during those times will be strictly enforced. So if they're in the lunchroom, um, they're not eating lunch, we're gonna expect their mask to be on their face. So what am, uh, what I'm saying is, is that they can't have their mask down just because they're in the lunchroom. They can have their mask down if they are putting food in their mouth and they are sitting six feet away from somebody. So we're not going to allow students to all sit and congregate five, six, seven of them at the same table with their mask down, okay? We have to make sure that we are doing that safely. That is the only time that we're going to allow masks to be down. Um, we're asking that students are wear a fresh mask every single day. Um, you know, I think that the whole world has turned into a bit of being a germaphobe and it will not be any different when they return to school. So let's just make sure that those masks are, um, clean, fresh masks every single day. Um, students will be required to use hand sanitizer when they are entering every single class. And so this is one way that we just know that hands are clean in every classroom as they're coming in, as they're touching surfaces. Um, hugging and other close personal interactions will not be allowed. Listen, we know it's been a long time. They haven't seen their friends. They miss each other. The natural inclination is to run and to give each other a hug. Um, but if I had a little squirt bottle, I would squirt them every time that I see them hugging because we have to make sure that we're actually putting some distance. And so they're gonna have to, I don't know, they're gonna have to make up some little wave from across the room. But, you know, all of the hugging and then just being in close quarters, that's just not going to work. We know that they're teens, they're gonna socialize with each other, and that's okay, right? Like, we want them to get to some sense of normalcy, but, um, hugging and all of those other good things will be off limits. Uh, water fountains will not be available, but students will receive a water bottle. And so we have field stations that students can use, um, to fill up water bottles. And students will not be allowed to share lockers. This is going to be a non-negotiable. We actually say this every year, but somehow they, um, find a way to share lockers. If it comes to our attention, if it looks like we're sharing lockers, we are just going to cut the lock off that locker, we're gonna take everything out, and that's going to be the end of the conversation. Every other locker, uh, will be utilized so that we can maintain social distancing. So they won't be using a locker right next to one another. So students, um, if they need a locker, just know that we're not doing locker sharing and we're not doing, oh, just throw your stuff in my locker. Um, this is the biggest one. When students are sick, utilize the remote learning option. Just don't send students to school if they are sick. Um, and all honesty, that's not necessarily new, but that is something that we need to really make sure that we're enforcing so that everybody can stay healthy. Um, tomorrow, we're going to ask families to do, um, a verification of information. So when we send out the letter saying, um, you know, uh, here's when your child will be returning to school, we're also going to give a link and we're just gonna ask parents to confirm, um, that the email address and the phone number that are on file is actually correct because we want to make sure that we have all of the correct information for our families who will be in person. So, um, COVID communication, I know that this is actually a big one. And so in the event of a COVID-19 positive case, we will follow all of the CDC and CPS guidelines for communicating with families and staff, okay? So we are going to be very transparent in this process, um, and we are, but we also, um, have to make sure that we're following all of the HIPAA regulations. So if for some reason, um, that it comes to our attention that, you know, somebody has tested positive for COVID-19, there are protocols in place that we will actually follow. And so, uh, we don't make those decisions at the school level. We have an office that we work where we actually, um, work with the Office of Health and, um, Student Wellness. Um, we communicate with them and then they will give us the guidelines and they will also give us, um, the communication guidelines. But we just want you all to know, you know, we've had to follow this process in the past. And, you know, uh, we have stuck to it by the letter of the law, so it will not be a case now. There may, you know, sometimes we know that the rumor mill can churn and, oh, we thought that somebody was COVID positive and they didn't say anything. However, communication only gets sent to anybody who would potentially be impacted. And so sometimes we think that communications, let's just say, for example, we had somebody that tested positive at COVID-19. Well, you, for COVID-19, you may or may not actually get any communication if you were not deemed to be a direct contact. So there are protocols in place, but just know that if for any reason that anybody's, um, safety could potentially be in jeopardy, that you will, um, hear directly from us. Um, APs, there's a comment in the chat too about the health screener. So for COVID testing, um, random COVID-19 testing will be a ma, a made available, uh, with parent consent. So students will actually have an opportunity, uh, for random COVID-19 testing. And then staff members also, um, have an opportunity for random COVID testing, which takes place every single Wednesday. And so it won't be every student every week, but we'll get a list. Parents will, um, be able to sign a consent form if they want to get their students COVID tested at the school. So for, um, technology and instructional materials, so students will be expected to bring their CPS issued, uh, Chromebooks every single day. Um, students will not be allowed to share Chromebooks. And, um, students will also receive school supplies on the first day of their return. So our shift A students, they'll get theirs on April 19th. And then our shift B, they'll get theirs on their Friday, April 22nd. Students may not bring in their personal devices. And I know that the, the question may be, well, why can't they bring in their own laptops or tablets? One of the major reasons is because, um, it is actually a little bit more difficult for them to connect on the CPS, um, broadband system. So it's just much easier if we're using CPS issued devices for them to be able to connect on all of the different, um, on the CPS Wi-Fi, okay? Um, if for some reason we have a student that's returning that has not been issued a Chromebook, then, uh, we will make sure that we, uh, get one issued to them if they return. In the event that we have, um, any of our young people, we know that sometimes they forget things. We know how that goes. Uh, we will have a limited supply of Chromebooks that will be available for checkout, um, in the event that they leave their Chromebook at home, but they just kind of gotta get in the habit, right? They remember their cell phones. Cell phones and Chromebooks have to come to school daily. So, uh, another question for our 7th grade parents and our 9th grade parents and all of our new students. We know that you may be a little bit concerned about being unfamiliar with the building. No, we are not going to just, uh, let you drop your baby off and then we just leave them lost in the building. We will have a robust plan to make sure that they get a tour of the school on the very first day of the school. We will have people in the hallways, um, and so, you know, I've talked to a couple of parents and the best that I can assure you is we have been open, doing our first day of school openings for many, many years now, right? So we pretty much know how to handle the first day of school. We will not just let them be lost, uh, in the bathroom and having students send them off and collect money for finder's fee and all of that. We will make sure that they know what, where they're going and that we are there welcoming our 7th grade, uh, 9th grade students and our new students. Classroom instruction. So this is what we're gonna ask parents to just have, just a little bit of patience the first or second week coming back because this is still, you know, is new for everybody. And our teachers have been doing an amazing job with their remote learning instruction, but even this next shift is going to be a little bit, um, new, is going to be new for our teachers. So they'll be providing instruction to students in person and to our remote learning students. So it's gonna take them a, a couple of weeks to get a good rhythm to make sure that all students are getting what they need. And that's really, uh, what we want to be focused on, every single student getting what they need to be successful. So for our students and for our parents, we just ask that you have a, a little bit more patience with us the first week of school and the second week of school because, um, they know how to teach. They've been doing that well, but now they're teaching, kind of teaching two groups at the same time. So if nothing else, just give us a little bit of patience. They're not ignoring the ones on the computer that are learning at home. They're not ignoring the ones that are learning in person. We just gotta figure out the rhythm for being able to do both well. Um, so let's talk about opting out. So parents may opt out of our hybrid learning or opt their kids out of coming to school , um, simply by sending an email to mphSadmin@cps.edu. So if you're saying, you know what, we changed our mind, we don't want to come to school in person, send us an email. We'll put them back on, um, a remote learning schedule. However, uh, students will still be expected to attend remote learning, okay? So we're not saying you can't do anything. You just have to be present and available for remote learning. However, they will not be able to opt back in and that's a non-negotiable. So if they opt out, they won't be able to opt back in, opt back in. So we're just asking families to really think about this really deeply and what's going to be best for them because once they opt out, then the next time that they'll be able to opt in is actually in the school year 2022, which is, uh, now starting in August. And so what we want to do now is we want to just open it up for questions and answers. So any questions, um, that families or, you know, anybody wants to pose, we ask that you drop them in the chat. I'll actually open it up to the APs. Uh, they have been amazing thought partners in this process. So if you think that there may be some tidbits of things that I have forgotten, uh, feel free to unmute and jump in. I got it covered? All right. Well, thank you all. So, um, we're just watching the chat now. We will, um, stay on to answer any questions. Um, so Ms. Webb, uh, and we know how this goes. Mr. Vice, can you grab the questions for us? Uh, I always ask Mr. Vice to grab the questions for us. So that is actually a good question. Um, we have not gotten any information right now. They're saying that we'll be able to offer the vaccine at school, but that's actually a good call on Ms. Webb. So that's something that I'll ramp up to the Office of, uh, Student Health and Wellness to ask that question. Um, so is there a real possibility that the date will be pushed back a week? Um, there's always a possibility with negotiations. Um, it is my hope and my belief that the CTU and CPS are really operating in, um, good faith. And so it's my hope that we're not going to get pushed back. So I, I feel like we'll be back on the 19th, but again, negotiations are negotiations. Um, so yes, public transportation will still be provided. Now, it's my understanding that the CTA will still also be, um, honoring the student fairs. Uh, Mr. Jennings, uh, which website? So Ms. Johnson, the schedule for, uh, those who have, uh, actually all schedules are rolling out tomorrow. So, uh, families will get an email tomorrow with the schedule for their children, um, so whether it's shift A or shift B. So watch those emails, but, um, because we're gonna send them out to students and to parents tomorrow.
Mr. Jennings, if you're referring to, um, the website for the health screener, it will go out in the communication that we send.
Um, Ms. Johnson, uh, Poston, is this one of your babies? So, um, our, for our, uh, school bus transportation, it's only available to certain students. So that's students and academic students or students in our cluster program. Um, so students in a cluster program, their transportation has already started, so they should be up and going. And then the only other time that we use school bus services is for our Academic Center families.
And Doc, I was just gonna add, if it is an Academic Center student, those, uh, your routes actually come from CPS Transportation Office, not from Morgan Park. So you would look forward to receiving that probably in the mail or email through CPS Transportation Office.
Ms. Myers, yes. Uh, your question is the one that drives everybody crazy, including me, okay? Uh, yes, they have to wear masks during gym and they hate it. Um, let me just be honest, they hate it because we've seen it during athletics, but the answer is yes. They actually have even been required to wear masks. Um, I don't know if you all ever seen a basketball game replayed with masks on. It's quite an interesting little sight. Uh, but we know that it can be done, but yes, they have to keep masks on. Um, and one of the reasons, um, to be honest, that, um, that we are keeping our bell schedule the way that our bell schedule is, is really so that they can have time, right? Like time in between the passing periods so that they can kind of go off in a little corner. We are by no means, um, saying like, hey, they can be in the hallways with their masks off because that's not what we're saying, but we are saying like, hey, if you work anywhere, you have to keep a mask on all day long. It can be a little bit stressful. So if you can get in a corner by yourself and there's absolutely nobody around and you need to pull it down and get a breath of fresh air, we understand that too. But what we're saying is that they're not going to be in the hallways congregating with masks off. Um, because it, it's just, we gotta be safe. So, yeah, gym time with masks.
Um, all students will end class at 2:45.
Um, you know what, Ms. Johnson, I'm, I'm not even really sure what an athletic mask is. Ms. Poston, you know what an athletic mask is? Ms. Ms. Poston and Ms. Vice are usually our resident, uh, athletes on this admin team here. So, uh, we will have to look into what those are. And then as far as, um, Academic Center sports, we literally were just talking about that. And then as far as academic center sports, we literally were just talking about that today. So we're hoping, actually, or yesterday, we're hoping to see some more guidance about AC sports starting really soon. So we actually have not seen issues with students not being able to breathe in their mask, and that's even planned. I know it sounds crazy, right, but I guess your body just has some way of conditioning itself. And so, but I would say, if for some reason that you couldn't breathe while doing PE, communicate with our PE teachers. Our PE teachers are really, really, you know, they're approachable, they're understandable. So if for some reason, just tap your teacher and tell them, hey, I need a little bit of a break, and there'll be more to understanding of that. So Ms. Yarborough, I see your question too. I know everybody's question is about the mask in gym. But again, we actually have gone through a whole basketball season of them wearing this. They had to wear masks in practices and during basketball, and they did okay. So with gym only being forty minutes, we, they should be okay. And we, on the administrative team, we talk about masks all the time. I think it also is just a preference. AP Jones believes in a cloth mask is a long story to why she has so many cloth masks. But let's just say that her mother hand makes these masks that she sends her as gifts, right? Well, I'm much more comfortable in a paper mask, so it's really students figuring out what's comfortable for them. And we do have masks available at school too. Paper and, but we mostly have cloth masks available. So, and it's normal to have all of these questions. We're doing something that we've never done before, so it takes a little bit of getting used to. So for opting out is actually an email address? And I will drop it in the chat too. So, you know, we know that some families are making decisions and changing their mind, but I just, you know, want to give a reminder that once we opt out, then we won't be opting back in. So, do we have any other? I'll leave it on to see if we have any other questions. If not, like usual, we are always available via email at any time. So don't hesitate to send us any question because we want to make sure that we're answering all questions, and we want to make sure that you all know just how serious and how committed that we are to making sure that we welcome all of our students and all of our staff members back to Morgan Park safely. As much as we want to get students and staff back in school, we also recognize that this has been a very tough year, physically, emotionally, mentally, and all of that. And so we take all of those things very serious. And we're planning for almost every single thing that we could potentially imagine. So if you have any questions, shoot us a question, and we will make sure that we get them answered. And we are also open to suggestions. So if you all have seen things that you think work well in other places, feel free to shoot those to us too because we are, you know, this is us all learning together, all right? But we do thank you all for trusting us with your child's education, that means the world to us. And we thank you all for trusting us enough to say that you are willing to send your kids back to school safely and knowing that we are going to take care of them. And while we're fussing about hugging, I think that it's probably gonna be the most difficult for me not to be wrapping my arms around the kids because I do miss them so much that my first inclination is to give them a big old hug. So I don't know what I'm going to do on the first day of school, I might be shooting myself with a little water bottle. Just because since they've been back in sports, I get so excited every day at three o'clock when they start entering for their different athletic practices. So you would not have told me how much I would actually miss them being gone for a little while. So again, send us questions, we thank you all so much. And we are looking forward to seeing our students back either for the first time on April nineteenth or April twenty-second. Check your emails tomorrow so that you will know when you will be returning. Thanks, everybody.